There we go. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, August 23rd, 2018. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Gooding.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
And Chair Mackin.
Here.
And we'll note for the record Commissioner Seasana is absent.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for adoption of the agenda, please? And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No in opposed? Consent calendar, we have nothing tonight. Oral communications, don't see anyone wishing to address the commission. I have no written communications, so we will move on to the first item of new business. This is a public hearing. Do we have a staff report first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's have a staff report.
Thank you. The applicant requests Planning Commission review of the proposed grading at 151 Westhill Place to allow for construction of an approximately 1,350 square foot accessory vehicle maintenance building and for expansion of the parking lot area next to that building. The proposed grading would involve approximately 424 cubic yards of soil to be removed from the site. This is an image of the site, so the proposed grading area is on the left of your screen, that area to the right I'll touch on, but they're doing some work there that's identified on the grading plan, but not really changing the soil volume there. By way of background, the project site is located at the far west end of the Crocker Park Trade Commercial District on the Westhill Place cul-de-sac. The site has a gentle cross slope going up from east to west. The site currently serves as a distribution warehouse and office facility for Frito-Lay Sales Incorporated. The existing building is approximately 15,000, actually a little over 15,000 square feet in floor area. Frito-Lay applied for a building permit earlier this year to add the accessory structure at the rear of the site for vehicle maintenance. This would enable Frito-Lay to streamline their distribution and vehicle maintenance operations to one site. However, during the course of the city's review for that building permit application, it became apparent that the associated grading will also require Planning Commission review prior to the city engineer issuing a grading permit. Note that the city engineer provides the technical review for any grading proposed for projects involving five cubic yards or more, and he has reviewed this and has essentially is waiting for your recommendation to be able to release. Whereas, the Planning Commission's role is to provide recommendations to the city engineer for projects involving 250 cubic yards of grading or 50 cubic yards of soil to be exported from the site. Since this project would involve a bit over 400 cubic yards of soil, the Planning Commission's recommendation is required prior to the city engineer's issuance of the permit. Just a couple notes on the project itself. As I mentioned, the accessory building would be to allow Frito-Lay to conduct routine vehicle maintenance at its distribution facility. The proposed widening of the parking lot in the front of that building would allow for flexibility in the parking and larger vehicle sizes to be parked there and make safer vehicle movements. A concrete retaining wall is proposed to be constructed along the west edge of the parking lot, and this is essentially the area that we're talking about here in the image. At its highest, it would have approximately four-foot exposure. The wall would step down to follow the topography behind it to be approximately a half a foot high at its shortest points on the eastern wings of that wall, if you will. Note that the plan provided by the applicant shows the area to be graded in gray on the left-hand side again, with the proposed building and proposed parking with it, and that area is shown also on this plan, so you can see the footprint of the building in that bottom corner in the parking just above it, and then grayed out in this image is the existing parking, which would go away in the kind of the middle of that area. So there's a change to parking, but the parking would remain conforming. It would actually be well over the required minimum of 21 spaces. It would have 55 spaces. So again, on the east side of site, the grading plan shows that narrow strip of land, or the right-hand side of this page, also showed in gray, and that's also to be widened out a little bit, but it's essentially flat there already, and so it'd just be paved, and there would be a landscape strip to buffer between this property and the neighboring property to the east. And so I won't go into detail on all these. It's provided in the staff report, but the application meets all the findings for a recommendation of approval, and so in closing, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission provide that recommendation of approval to the city engineer via adoption of the resolution EX-318.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for staff? Apollo, Doug?
Just one. Is the building at issue subject to a separate permitting process?
It is subject to a building permit, and so they're well on their way on the building permit approvals, and essentially this is, I think, the primary thing holding them up at this point. So, but yeah, so it's been through plan checks already for that.
So that's not in any way subject to this particular application?
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Patel.
They have, and I don't see it here, but the drainage would be down towards the middle of the site, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as they opened the public hearing, and yeah, so he could elaborate on this.
Okay.
But yeah, so it'd flow away from that wall. It would slope inwards towards its existing area. And we also, so the city engineer looks at stormwater controls, and I also deal with, we have what's called a regional municipal permit that the city has an obligation to enforce, and so we look at the stormwater very closely to make sure that they've complied with the regional, the state water board mandated requirements, so.
Okay. Any further questions? No? Okay, then, without further ado, we'll open the public hearing. The applicant is here. If you'd like to come forward to the podium and state your name and tell us about your project, please.
Okay. My name is Joe Breedlove. I'm Senior VP of Operations for a company we call ConReel, Constructed Real Estate. We're design builders for PepsiCo, Frito-Lay. We do this all over the country, follow their warehouses and offices. This project is a project, as Ken mentioned and elaborated on real well. It's to help orchestrate the maneuvering of Frito-Lay's vehicles on the site. Now, they're kind of platted up there now. There's a garage that's really not on this, as Ken said, permit, for the building permit, but we'll go there. It's a minimum garage. All they do is change tires and things like that, windshield wipers, but not, don't do any major repair. The project itself, we've applied for, I think, several applications trying to get it going, because it's been taking a tremendous time to get a permit, and we've, I think, been going at this about six months, Ken, probably?
Sounds about right.
And the project itself is only about a $2 million, a million dollar project, so it's a small project. And as I said earlier, once we get through the excavation, we go right into it. As Ken said, we've got everything in place for the building permit. We've been able to, even with the neighbors, we've had conversations with the neighbors, because we had to do some demolition on the side there and the neighbors, and get standard and get everything. So that's basically what it is. At the end of this project, you'll have a building that, if you go by now, it looks kind of naked now, because we stripped all the wild vegetation from it, and it's been overgrown, but now we're taking, and we're going to re-landscape, rehire it. First of all, you mentioned water runoff. We had a civil engineer here locally to do all the water calculation for. We had a landscape architect that was building, build landscaping there all around San Francisco. Did a real good plan, you know. Thought he was doing a Taj Mahal at first, you know, it's a warehouse, but those are the things you'll have at the end of the project. And we're so thankful that you're allowing us to come before you and present this.
So if you could stay there, do we have any questions?
I forgot to introduce Isaac Johnson. He's from Frito. He's with Frito-Lay.
Okay.
He's the designated project manager for him, okay?
Okay, so before you go away, let's see if we have some questions. Commissioner Gooding?
Just a couple, yes, thank you. This is sort of part and parcel of the whole building application perhaps as well, but it's the use of the property. So my question is, is the direction of this building, after you grade it, going to change the volume of vehicle ingress and egress from this?
No, sir. No, sir. All we're doing, if you notice the little area on the east, I explained to you, it's now where the trucks can't hardly pass by, go out the exit ditch, because the trucks are parked in there, sticking out too far. We're going back 10 feet where they can miss that. On the west side, all we're doing is extending the parking lot where they have more, but we're not adding any more parking lot, parking.
So you anticipate the same number of vehicles coming?
Same number, yes, sir.
Any change in the kind of vehicles? Is this to accommodate larger trucks or?
No, sir. No, sir. Just now, where a lot of times trucks would come in, they don't have a place to park, they have to park along the fence, people have to maneuver around them. Now they can get into spaces that are wide enough and deep enough.
And are you planning to, this may be part of the building application, I'm sorry, I'm leaping ahead, but it's, we have you here. Is there any change in the aesthetics of the fencing or border of the property?
Yes, sir. We're going to take and we're use everywhere that's, they say, if you're heading down the street, you'll see that we left some concrete, or that retain wall, the screen walls, left those up. Then we're going to hide everything else with vegetation, and then we're using your new code fence with a powder cover fence in the back, I think dark and black, I think, Ken, right? This little building, we're going to have to put solar pounds on the top of it. It's only 1300 square feet, and we're going to put sprinkler system in it. So we're doing more than this garage than we have, and we built 50 of these all over the country.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gomez?
No, no, I don't have anything else. Seems like a sensible project, and I'm, I am well informed from the staff report, and I appreciate you coming out, so I really don't have any qualms.
Okay. I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
The parking expansion on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
When I went to the site and looked at it, you've already got some fairly long trucks parked there, but I can see there's enough room to park more and/or longer trucks. My question is, on that property line from the property owner next door, what I saw was a chain link fence. Is there any concern about someone pulling in there backing up a large truck and, because it's a different?
No, because those, we will not see the trucks that pull there. They're called bulk trucks, and they're, they're, they're not trailer trucks.
Right.
And we have large wheels, oh, excuse me, we have large wheel stops to stop them.
Okay.
And there's no way.
So that would not be an issue? That's really all that I had, was I looked at the site, and it's been cleared nicely, and concerns about the drainage, just my observations. It's not really steep.
No.
The mountain is there behind, but it's not very steep.
Everything that we're doing, first of all, we're not pushing any water to the neighbor's property. All the water, what we retain and drain, and our drainage and the calculation to pipe, all been calculated by assembly of the earth. So we're not creating any more surplus of surface where, surface where we're draining. And even the irrigation system, we've gone to hardscape and a lot of pebbles and things like that to do away with the irrigation, some of the irrigation.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Anyone else? No? And would your associate, would you like to address us as well?
No.
Okay. I didn't want to leave you out.
No, no, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chair Patel.
Okay, commissioners, discussion. Commissioner Patel, you want to start?
I'm good. I have nothing to say.
Commissioner Gooding? For the, just a point of order, if you want to close the public?
Oh, yes, we do need a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No in opposed? Okay, so back to our discussion. Commissioner Gomez?
Again, I think it's a sensible project. If I'm hearing correctly, it's to allow more maneuverability for the business operating there. Doesn't seem like it's going to have an impact in the area. Seems like they're following the letter and spirit of the law. The staff recommendations seem on point. You know, I like seeing that we're not disrupting the older trees. You know, that's a key detail there. So I'm all, I think we're pretty good for my line.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, this appears to satisfy the requirements of the law and doesn't appear to have any significant impact on larger area beyond the existing use, so.
Okay. I'm going to make a note also. I appreciate the extra detail with the landscaping, because it's kind of a nondescript building, and that will help. That will certainly enhance the rest of the area. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for, this is grading review EX-3-18 for 151 Westhill Place for approval.
Yes, I'll move to approve the application with the conditions in the staff report.
Okay, and a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No in opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck with your project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We look forward to seeing that new transformed building and the grounds. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good flight back.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, items initiated by staff. Ken?
I'll just tee this up, if you will, and if Commissioner Gomez or Gooding want to elaborate at all. We had a meeting of the subcommittee on the tree ordinance on Tuesday, and I think that went well, but I think that's all I had, just to mention that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, items initiated by the commission, does the subcommittee want to report?
I think it was a very, very fruitful and productive meeting. I want to thank, Ken prepared a sort of a schematic layout of existing law and proposed changes and issues that was very, very helpful, and thank you for that. We made a lot of progress, and I think staff is going to come up with a few tweaks and modifications from our discussion, and we'll either, I don't know, meet once more or communicate our comments, and I think we're pretty close to a final thing.
Commissioner Gomez, you want?
Yeah, I would like to add, I mean, one of the key discussion points that we're having is, is one, you know, right tree, right place, to make sure that the updated ordinance kind of reflects that, that vision for the community, and also, you know, over time, how do we increase the existing canopy so that we've got more shade, less of a heat island effect, more habitat, and what many of us, I think, would agree is just a more beautiful aesthetic and community value overall. So I look forward to continuing the discussions. I think we're going to have a good framework in place, and just appreciate Ken's work, because I know he's put in a lot of work on this. So it was really informative for Doug and I, and we'll just keep updating you as we go along.
I have a question for you, then. Came to mind, and I've had several people who are neighbors bring this up. The concern was just, especially the block I live in, there's been a lot of construction, there've been a lot of trees taken out recently, and of course, we've seen the same in projects we've reviewed. And so sometimes the trees going in are smaller, younger trees. They're not all large canopy, as Commissioner Patel explained to us last time. Appreciate that. And I guess the concern that's starting to come out is, what assurances do we have that when a property owner says, well, we're going to replace trees we took out with new ones, and sometimes they'll say even, we're going to add more. There's no assurance of trees going to grow, but the concern I'm hearing from neighbors, and I said, well, we have a subcommittee that's working on this with another committee, and the concern is, what happens two, three years from now? What if somebody doesn't water the trees? What if they just allow them to go follow, where they go, we don't care, we did what we promised we would do? Is there anyone that's keeping track of six months, a year from now, going back and going, are they really taking care of the trees, or was this just to get through the permit process? Can you, has that come up at all?
That's an excellent point and question, Commissioner Mackin, because we did talk about that as far as, you know, figuring out some sort of, you know, time horizon to where, whether it was a situation where a permit was pulled for tree trimming, and if it ended up being excessive tree trimming, which resulted in the fatality of a tree due to like a diseased tree or some other influencing factor, that we've, we do need to have some sort of mechanism within the code to, you know, to discourage that behavior or do something that's going to, you know, significantly limit that from occurring. But we didn't necessarily talk about if we're doing a, and Ken, feel free to jump in here, if we are replacing a mature, you know, tree, even if it's not a protected tree, and let's say we're adding more trees, right? One non-protected tree, bigger species, big canopy hypothetically is being removed, and the new owner is going to plant some new trees, but those don't have good, you know, irrigation practice around them, right? So we end up with weaker diseased trees. I don't know if we have any language in there really around that.
Yeah, it is a good comment, and I think it's worth giving further thought to how to do that, whether it's through the administration of the, I'm thinking, my God is saying it's through an administrative checkup later, if you will, and/or complaint, if it was brought as a complaint. And I'm not sure, you know, going around and checking all the trees that we've done over time is maybe a difficult thing for staff time.
It's administratively, perhaps is administratively onerous.
Right.
Right?
But I think we can, for those cases where it does get caught, I think, I would envision that we structure the code so much like the loss of a severely trimmed tree, that these trees would be protected essentially by permit now. So you have existing trees that are, what I've termed them as juvenile trees, that are not requiring a permit to remove at this point in time. If a tree becomes a protected tree and subject to a permit, that replacement tree, I would, I would think that that then, that protection, even though it's a small tree, would carry over to that. So I think that's something that we could look.
Well, I think one of the concerns that I'm hearing is that it's pretty simple to go buy a bunch of trees and plonk them in the ground and then ignore them. And we're fooling ourselves if we think that we're doing the right thing. We don't want to lose all these trees, and then nothing replaces them. You can argue the merits of climate change, but the temperature changes in your neighborhood when the trees come out. You can feel it. It's just totally different. The wildlife disappears. I've seen that. Just where I lived, a lot of the wildlife has just gone because the trees all disappeared. And if there's not some mechanism, and this isn't to create work for staff or a burden on staff, city staff, I'm sorry, not work for the owner or more work for staff, but if there isn't a mechanism that a property owner knows, this is serious, and it's going to have a follow-up, to make sure, yes, water's expensive, yes, there's a drought, you don't want to water the tree, and the first year it's going to need water, because we also have drought cycles. They're not going to survive without some watering. I'm just concerned that we need to look at this, maybe.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'll take that into consideration with the draft that we'll have, and I'm actually, you know, it's at the subcommittee level now, and I think once the subcommittee is happy with it, and they're hearing what you're saying too, that we'll both put it to the full Planning Commission as an informational item, as well as to OSEC in the same way, and so if there's something that's maybe not, not quite there to the commission satisfaction, that it provides an opportunity to tag on before it goes on to the city.
And someone may have a better answer for how to manage this, but I'm just bringing it up because I'm hearing it from my neighbors, and I feel compelled to say something about it, on their behalf, but I also agree.
So one of the permits that we approved, I think, last week or the week before, not last week, it was the week before, or not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the city engineer actually said, you know, as part of this permit, you have to plant an oak on the property. And so when, in the past, when the city engineers dictated that, you know, as part of this permit, you have to plant X, Y, and Z plant on your property, how is that enforced right now? Do you know?
So I think what you, I think what you saw was a design permit, correct, along with excavation permit, and so all those trees would need to be planted before we'd signed off on a certificate of occupancy on the house. So their landscaping would need to be complete before they even can occupy the house.
And when you guys do the certificate of occupation, or that certificate?
Occupancy.
Occupancy, would that, part of that be like adequate irrigation to the plants? Like is there a drip system? Is there certain things in place to keep these plants in?
Right, so the irrigation system is also part of the, typically it's part of the design plan. Now, in some cases, you may have areas, oak, oak trees for, as an example, or olives, you know, they're very low water use, and it's not to say you don't have to water them the first year, but they can often get by with hand watering for that first year, first two years to get them started. After that, you don't want to water them, or they actually get a rot in the root systems that will kill them off. So there's a, it's not always will you necessarily have an irrigation system going to every tree, but there is a maintenance agreement that's tied with the, with the landscape, you know, so in this case, you have a new home with a landscape, and they actually, that maintenance agreement gets recorded with the county, so it carries with the property to future owners that, so if they let it go, and comes to the city's attention, then we actually have the tools to, the first recourse would be essentially to get the owner to repair it, but the city could actually do it and charge them in those cases. So, so we do have tools in place for those kinds of things.
So when we.
Whether irrigated or not.
So when we, when we put as a condition, for example, I think on that same permit, we also indicated that as a condition of the permit, we would, they would voluntarily plant a, um, high canopy tree. That would also be part of that procedure where it would be a maintenance, oh, sorry, what did you call it?
Maintenance agreement.
Maintenance agreement.
Right, so that all would be covered within, so that when you add a condition on the landscaping, that becomes part of the landscape plan.
Okay, and so if the trees were to, if, if for example, they planted a high canopy tree and they then didn't take care of it and it died, then the city could potentially have a recourse in either planting a new one, making, or planting a new one, ensuring that it grew, and then charging the landowner.
Correct. The ensuring that it grew, I think, um, if it's, if it's their responsibility, I'm not sure. We're getting into kind of a
Oh, yeah.
very deep level on a, a hypothetical.
Yeah.
But yes, we do have the tools to make sure that trees get maintained.
Sorry, that's okay, yeah.
And, uh, could you clarify when you say the city, who in the city is responsible for monitoring the landscape plan? Is that Public Works?
So, if we're talking about street tree, which it sounded like that was, um, it's, yeah, it, I think it depends on the nature of the, the project. Most of the time on street trees, this, they may have, I, and I backing up a little bit here. Most of the time, my understanding on street trees is once it's installed, then it becomes the city's. On rare occasions, it may stay as part of that landscape plan agreement area. And, um, one of those came up recently, actually. So, it really, it depends on the details of, of what was approved. I think usually probably for a single family home, it would become, if it's a street tree truly, then it's going to be turned over to the city to maintain after that.
And that would be a Public Works?
Right.
Okay.
Public Works.
It's, it's an interesting topic because I am aware, years ago, living in San Francisco, they plant street trees. And the property owners were responsible for them. And then they turned the responsibility back to the city of San Francisco, and then they turned it back to the property owners. And it just keeps going back and forth. And they were pretty strict about it because they lost a lot of street trees where property owners said, "I didn't plant it, I'm not going to water it." So, I'm, i- it's just interesting discussion, I don't mean to prolong it, but also that we, so we have two issues. We have street trees and then we have trees on private property. And I'm just posing this question, what is the mechanism and who's the one tasked with monitoring these?
So it seems as though, and, and, out of, as, like step one, it's part of sort of this permit process, so we can require them to grow them. So that's good to know, right? So if, if we, if we say as a condition of this permit, you have to grow the street, then they're required to grow it. Now, it seems as though the secondary answer is, I don't know if we've, we've gotten that far because the hypothetical kind, kind of got a little bit complicated. But I don't know if we then go on to the, I mean, I don't know if someone goes onto that property and says, "This is actually not a..."
This is, these are just items for discussion that maybe.
It's really been a complaint-based
Right.
issue like most code, code enforcement issue, really any code enforcement issues.
A neighbor would complain, say, "There's no oak tree on that property." And I know for a fact that there was supposed to be an oak tree. The problem with that is though, like, most people probably aren't paying, I, I don't pay attention to my neighbor's permits.
Right.
So I wouldn't know that my neighbor has to plant an oak tree on their property as part of this permit.
Yeah, I, so, okay.
I think.
Taking a couple steps back, if I may, Commissioner Gooding. So I think the key here is the data. We're in the informa- information age. Doug, you mentioned it yourself, there's a database, you know, for the HOA over on the ridge, right, of a tree inventory. Ken, do we have an active tree inventory of both city and private property trees? Is there a database that's easily to navigate?
The city, I understand, Public Works has a database
Okay.
of, of their trees on private trees, um.
Probably not.
No, i- it's not. Um, it would be project-specific, so you would go to that, uh, that address file and pull the plans that are on file for that and see what's there.
So here's the thought, and this is a little more, this requires a subcommittee and other stakeholders.
Yeah, I, I think before we get too deep, it really is something that if we want to have a deep discussion, I think we need to agendize this.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, no, I just think, uh, this is coming straight from, look, the science is there. Climate change is happening and we should, this should be, um, enshrined in the update to the Climate Action Plan for the city of Brisbane. Because if we really want to get serious about this as a community and have a broader discussion with, you know, more, more community members here, I think we can find a lot of alignment there. The issue is public versus private property, how do we navigate that space? But we've got to have that information in a, in a place where it is, it is providing actionable, you know, in- info. Because right now, we're just, we're really speculative, you know, and I, I, and I, so I'm hearing your experiences. I mean, I can kind of observe a few things on my end that I've seen over the years. But it is something that, again, for, for, for the, um, kind of the ethos of sustainability for the city of Brisbane is that we've got to find a mechanism to increase the tree canopy, the existing, and, and figure out mechanisms when there are trees being removed, that we've got the right framework that encourages the replacement, right? So that's a lot of work, I mean, I, we're not going to solve that right now.
It is, it is.
So Ken's going to finish it by next week.
Yeah, please.
Next time we're here, Ken will have that done for us.
Yes.
Thank you, Ken, appreciate that.
He'll have it, he'll have it all completed.
So I guess the question is, Commissioner Mackin, is, is this through OSEC, right? I mean, OSEC is leading a lot of this.
They are, they're leading a lot of it.
I understand that the Climate Action Plan is, is under review for an update right now. And I, I would, and that is my understanding, and I'm not in the details on, on what their process is, but that, that's OSEC. I, I would think that the planning commission would, would see that as well at some point as a revised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, I don't know if we'd have an opportunity to opine or have a collaborative conversation or if that then goes to council? Because I do think this is kind of more of a, this is like a cross collaborative issue.
I, I can pass on your, um, the general gist of your comments to, uh, staff that supports OSEC and, and, um, we can, we can report back to you on, on what their timeframe is for the update and.
I'd love to see what some of other cities are doing. I guess the, the question is, we're probably not the first people thinking about this.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, whether it's cities in California or cities in other places, I'm sure there's, there's a best practice out there, right? So like, what, what are other cities doing, smaller cities perhaps, that want to, uh, p- preserve existing, you know, uh, canopy? Or expand the urban forestry, uh, you know, I'm forgetting, uh, inventory, right? For lack of a better word.
So again, a- am I hearing that you may meet again, subcommittee, potentially?
So, as, as we left it is, I'm going to take their input and prepare a, a draft now of a, a revised ordinance. And I'll put that out to the subcommittee electronically. And we'll see what level of, of comments come back. If they're simple, we can just keep it electronic. If there's something where we want to come back together and meet again to, to iron things out a little bit more, we'll do that. But that's the next step is essentially preparing that draft for a subcommittee. Once they're okay with it, then we'll, we'll do a, a informational item to both full bodies and before it goes on to some council.
Okay.
And just one final thought, as, as this is moving down its, its kind of administrative path, if you will, how would one pursue putting, putting a, some sort of, you know, write-up in the city, you know, the city paper around this issue to try and get a little bit more, uh, you know, cross dialogue going?
Not a bad idea.
You know, civic participation, right? Because I think the more insight we have
Right.
constructively, the better policy we're going to come up with.
Right. And Commissioner Gooding, did you have something you were going to add to this discussion?
It got covered in the
Okay.
conversation.
Okay. I, I think that's a really good suggestion though, because, um, the more input, a lot of great minds in town.
Yeah.
They can offer some ideas on this. Don't lose sleep over it, Ken.
Yeah, don't, don't.
We didn't mean to do this to you.
Yeah, we're not putting this all on your back. I mean, I think this does need to be kind of a, more of a collaborative base, so.
Okay. When you're talking about collaborative, are you just saying, "Put the information out there so that if there's a subcommittee meeting that people can, from the public can come and give their opinion?" Or are you talking about like some sort of system where they can email in and?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I want to know what other people have to say.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we don't have anybody in the audience here, perhaps we have people watching us. But it would be good to have more collective impact, or a city of close to forty-five hundred people, I believe, so I'm sure there's some other.
Are you thinking like a online survey or something like that?
Well, that, if that's, I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to create more, you know, work for staff. I'm just trying to think through a way where we can get a little bit more collective input on, on this.
Wouldn't be the case that when the subcommittee, um, proposes the, the amended regulations to be adopted or to be approved by the commission for forwarding on to city council, that will be at a public hearing that would be noticed? And an opportunity for public comment at that time.
So this
Isn't that how it would?
This is not a planning, it's, it's, it's kind of a different animal, so it's not within the zoning ordinance. It's within, um, Title twelve, which is on streets and I forget the whole title, uh, name. But, so this is more of a, it was a, OSEC kind of initiated it with, with city council.
Right.
So, Planning Commission doesn't really have direct purview over this. So what I'm saying is that we would, we would put an informational item forward to you so you can see it. And if the Planning Commission, say, wants to, uh, put together a letter, um, that would go along with that to city council, but you wouldn't be having a public hearing on it.
Would, fair enough. I, I think I understand the distinction, but would it be feasible to put her on the commission's agenda for the whole commission to discuss the subcommittee's recommendation, at which time the public would have the right to comment?
Yes, so we could do that as an item initiated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to come, come up with a
Right.
a forum for Napollos' suggestion that the public have a right to come and speak and
Right.
that might be the logical way.
Yeah, so when that comes, we can put that on the agenda, not as a public hearing, but it'd be on the agenda so the public's aware.
That, that's.
I, I think in addition from what Napollos is saying is, um, perhaps when the city updates the website, sometimes they'll put a note about something under consideration. And that gets a little more attention from the public than just the agenda for the Planning Commission, that not everyone will go in and read. But something just to let people know that open space and planning are looking at this with staff and that their input is welcome.
Or, you know, we, maybe, you know, the week of that meeting, whenever that meeting happens, maybe we can somehow put on that big white sign up there that says, you know, "We're going to have a meeting about the trees" and this is recommendation.
I, I would hesitate to get too much attention on to a big discussion at the Planning Commission. It's really a city council decision, um, you know, you, you can provide your input to them. And I, I'll put the idea forward to the city manager in terms of, and, and to John. I, I think, um, these are ideas that, that I should discuss with, with, uh,
That's a good point.
higher-level staff.
That's a good point, I think, you know, my interpretation of what, what Ken has just said is that, that maybe we aren't the body to, to have that public discussion.
Oh, yeah.
It's maybe more the city councils, uh.
I'm just trying to emulate the discussion, that's, that's, I'm trying to emulate the discussion.
No, eventually we have to get down on the details of how to hold that, so that's, you might be right.
But I, I think, I, I think your points are, are well-made and, and definitely we want to, we have, want to have the public opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, that's, do we have any other items from the Commissioners?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting of Thursday, September thirteen, twenty eighteen, at seven thirty.
I moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.